Here to meet with Mr. Begley and the DLA. And to give you a chance to talk through the, talk through the tennis court plans as, as bid. And then we will, they'll entertain questions, we'll make sure that you guys are comfortable. And then the last thing we need to do, or we need is if we're able to proceed with the current bid, then we need to set a meeting date Thursday, Friday, or Monday. So that the bids do not expire within the thirty to forty-five day timeframe. We can ask for an extension if we need to, but we wanna get on schedule. So that's really the thing is, makes it a little time pressured is that if we get to the back of the schedule minute, it's the linchpin for all of the other construction that we wanna do after. So I just wanna make sure I say that aloud. Ready, love? Well, let's see where we are in the work session. So, alright, without further ado, Mr. Begley.
Thank you. You all know me, historic operations, so I do the projects, maintenance transportation. But with me is Brian Pensec of DLA, he and I have been working closely together through several of the projects, baseball field we've completed, we're doing very good street parking. And then we're kinda coming across the street and this kinda starts the major muscle movements of freeing up the current space where the tennis courts are. And moving that to the area that we leased from the town and to do it on budget. So, kinda look historically on this, the money that we have is all based on capacity and kinda looking at the needs and working with Mr. Nolan and Mr. Schultz on what they'd like to see. And dealing with a couple of constraints with where the, the new tennis court will be located. We've kinda come up with, with this plan with the bids coming in right around three point two million. I had the exact number. Which, that's three point two million for the tennis courts. It doesn't include the lights, the Musco lights, so I would do a separate PO. And that's about a hundred and eighty thousand. And then I would do the, I would do a contract directly with the people that paint the tennis courts. So that's about another hundred thousand dollars. So right now, with what we have, we envision this being about four million dollars to do this project for the post-tension concrete. And it also would have a spectating area. I know there were some concerns with bathrooms not being there. That was something that we did discuss at the beginning of the project, but there are not utilities there. So it was something, when I was weighing, do we want the post-tension or asphalt? Or do we want bathrooms? The post-tension concrete is a much superior product and it'll last fifty years as opposed to the asphalt that requires a lot more. So the direction we went was with working with Mr. Schultz and working with the park and with the school. We do have restrooms that are accessible, it's not the most ideal, I recognize that. But we would have a very functional facility that I think we would all be proud of. That we could come back in the future if money became available and operate with that. I didn't miss anything. You guys wanna gather around the table and take a look?
I'll bring up, I know we talked about twelve courts. I know there were some questions about twelve courts, again constraints in both land layout. But I will say from the athletic side of things, ten courts would allow us to host sectionals or regionals or even a semi-state if need be. That's the playable surface there. Twelve is really, gives you just an extra practice surface place and an extra space for competition. But ten's all we need to hold a competition at the state level.
Right, oriented, you, this way is north, this will be the high school up here. This is the park, this is that retention pond, this is that path that's, that's right there currently. So it would have a viewing stand right here, this would be an elevated viewing stand. It does have some lockers in there. The entrance could be from here and we also have a public entrance over in this area. So these would be the post-tension concrete, final post-tension concrete contract that met our requirements was challenging. But we have secured one and I've done the background check on their task project. So this is just kinda what it looks like. One of the big constraints that we had here is there's an underground pipeline that runs right here. And if you, you could put stuff over the easement, but if you do, then they need to get that pipeline, they're going through what to put there. So we wanted to make sure everything was to the west of that pipeline. And then we do have the town pool right here, you can see that perimeter. And then this is a non-pervious surface, so there is water retention that has to go in that we're running to make up underneath the actual facility with underground retention. And then also here in this area, which they're, what is it, going for about fifteen dollars a cubic foot for underground retention? We have a very high water table, so that was, of all these projects I do, the thing that keeps me up at night is water retention. Cause it is a, it's that third rail, you don't know how much it's going to eat into your budget.
And it eats up a lot, a lot of our budget, the, the water retention's a huge chunk of that.
Underneath the right field of the baseball field, there's like, there's like two Olympic sized pools.
So are the courts all elevated then as part of the retention issue? Or is there ground?
They're almost, they're just floating.
Okay.
There'll be a great big ground. A little, a little bit higher, because of the site, you go out there, it's high here.
Okay.
So, and we need the courts all to be on one level. There are some stairs here. So the grade will kind of dip, dip towards that retention and then there's some stairs to get access up to make that whole surface level.
So they should drive, drive.
Yeah. You notice how the, the grade of the outfield, the right field, there's a, if you go back there.
This is where I hang out.
There's, there's about a, there's about a two foot jump off the bat there.
Yeah, to build it up and maybe.
So.
There are need bleachers.
And this is all one spot here, that this whole part of there.
You would put your, you would put your one, your one, two, three and two doubles around, yeah, turn around these.
For the five.
It's tough to get that in because this has to be, it's, it's a depression, it's like a retention pond.
It doesn't have water and it was, it's a rain.
It'll be a dry pond.
But we have to have, we have to have a spot there so you can't really put anything here.
Night chairs.
Used as a night chairs, right?
Yeah, so they'll be fencing up around that, but yeah. There is, yeah, there is some grass here. But, but the perimeter will have wind screens.
Permanent?
They have to come down in the winter.
Cause some of those fences have those plastic things that go through and then what they come?
The black ones?
The privacy, yeah, the slats.
Yeah.
No, we're not doing those. I mean, we'll have that around.
Is that more expensive to do that, to be the ones with the slats? We put four pictures of Kyle all over it in the paper.
I think the upkeep on those plastic slats is huge, cause they're right.
The upkeep on the wind screens, so I don't know the difference, that's why I'm asking what the research was on those two things. Because the upkeep on the wind screens.
Most of the high end facilities that we've looked at have had wind screens, we have not seen any high ones with plastic slats.
I've seen combos, like one of the ones like on the west, like over here, they would have the slats. And then along here they would have the, um, whatever the wind screen. I, I don't know the science of it, I've just seen it in both, both ways, I just know our big problem is the wind coming from the west.
Sean, you're familiar with the Crown Points?
Yep.
Is the, the elevated, how big is this relative to theirs? And, oh, I was gonna ask, so the weeds decide on, what is, what is the material?
My recommendation is not to do tracks, and here's why.
Not to do what?
The tracks that can. It is, often their maintenance guy, they have people slipping on that stuff when it gets wet all the time. I know we, we, we were concerned about the aluminum, but I think we found, we, we found a.
They have, they can put a coating on it, like a grease coating on it, on the aluminum.
The, the tracks, there was, the two, the two things that we noticed, when we're up on walking on it, the static electricity would be exact. You'd walk on it, then you'd touch the railing, it was substantial.
It's also very hot. I was just gonna ask, I'm gonna attest to the slipperyness and.
Sort of this slippery, huh?
Yes.
And it gets real slick and the maintenance guy was like, this is a liability right there for us. But this is the same size as theirs. And then we also, we changed, we changed this to a glass observation like on that, yeah.
So you can sit, you can, you can put, you can bring a folding chair up there, like, sit there so you can view right through the glass.
So, what is the timetable?
The talking timetable, February to Angela.
So you're thinking we can have double July, or even July?
I said we possibly could have it.
It's a good structure.
I thought I'd have a park around the end of October.
I understand.
Yeah, but that's the goal, that's what you're asking, yeah.
There's also, there's also bleachers here along this area right here.
And we're reusing.
We're trying to reuse.
We just have some existing.
In condition, we're gonna, you know, there's red, um, colors on the, on the riser boards that are damaged or had those replaced. But say a hundred thousand dollars to reuse those bleachers, so.
And, and looking, I know that the bathroom is a big sticking point, you know? Not having the utilities there and talking with the DLA, it's, one of the things was get the, the utilities out there. We were thinking of spending three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars to put bathrooms.
It would just be one man's, one man's.
And then two more courts for probably a hundred, four hundred. So, I mean, if, keep it into, I answered to you guys and I answer to this guy too, I keep it in budget, so.
So the bathroom issue with the town is that we're reliant on them actually having their code that is going to be unlocked when they say it's gonna be unlocked.
We unlock it for the softball.
Is it a code or a key?
It's a code.
But can they program it to be unlocked?
Yeah, and it could be programmed, yeah.
You, you guys are comfortable with those, but Jill's.
Jill is just saying, hey, sure, just give me your date and I'll.
So it'll be either that or the high school.
The high school would just be for our events, we're not gonna open the high school for public to use in our restrooms. Which is, I understand the restrooms and we have a lot of public use on this grounds, but, you know, that, that's my concern with putting restrooms out there is that these would be unlocked a lot. And, and then we're liable for all the maintenance on that unlocked damage bathrooms. And the park has struggled with that, with locked bathrooms. There, you know, I, I, I don't wanna bring on that liability to us that, you know, now it's eleven o'clock at night, we have people out there playing tennis and our bathrooms are destroyed, which seems to be a regular occurrence here in town with, with the park bathrooms. So, yeah, we'll use our facilities or we'll rely on our facilities to the former hosting events.
And did you say it is, those bleachers are covered too?
They're not, they're not, they're not covered.
Like the ones that we currently have?
No, that, that's a permanent structure.
So wait, there's, there's no shade with bleachers?
I mean, the, the bleachers are close to, um, the stairs, so there is a little bit of shade. You know, if you're, say you're, you'll get shade on that side if you're, the sun's here, the shade, you know? But it's not covered.
It is.
That means brutal now for the giant boys season.
Have you ever done the shaded?
It's a structure, I mean, we could.
And maybe that's.
I, you know, we don't know the fate of the pool property. You know, maybe that's something we can forward, we're able to put a joint shaded area that serves both tennis and their, their pavilions and areas that they were gonna have to. I think we can probably find a shade solution.
I mean, they have one now out there which only, doesn't cover all of it, but at least when little babies come, you can hide under that little, middle section, because if not, matches are, you know, four to seven. It's, it's bad.
They're tight. It's tight.
We'll be close to put it there.
Cause the courts are, are right on either side.
So locker, you said there's locker rooms in the middle?
Yeah.
Cubbies.
Cubbies.
Just cubbies.
Like for storage?
Martini gets there to.
Why couldn't the shade be built into the seating? Come up over it?
We're using the seating.
Cause it's stairway, so it would be very high. Cause the seating is, we're at, um, twelve feet, five inches just to the, to the deck, so we'd have to go. Shading would have to be up.
So could you, could you apply a shading thing to the elevated viewing area? You can't do it to the bleachers, can you maybe do it where people are gonna put their chairs down?
Up top?
Yeah.
I mean, Kyle, you're up there now, I'm not, but.
Yeah.
Don't you guys all look for the one little spot sometimes?
You know, you know what happens is, at least with Monster, we have so many kids, a lot of those kids don't play in most of the J V University events because the teams that we play, we have twenty eight kids on our team.
They got her.
Correct.
And so we got kids that are, don't have a court to use and are there for three, four hours. So under, there's a lot of space that we talked about putting, taking tension, this underneath, maybe this. So there will be some protection, you know?
Underneath, okay, I'm a shade now, we're sorry.
Under the viewing deck.
So this is the viewing, so this is kinda looking straight at it, so a person would be standing up here.
Yes.
So you would have some, we would be able to put some seating down there.
Those, and those would be a ground level, right?
Yes.
And they would still be able to see out to cheer?
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna be required to be watching those matches and cheering.
I'm sure that would be.
Can we remove those bleachers, those, those somewhere else and we could have seating on all four of those areas?
Could, I'm sure this was thought of, would it make sense to have a court here instead of this out west?
Yeah, just wouldn't.
Had to come off of here.
Well, I'm gonna bring my, it's in the way of everybody else and it's a fight, so if we're gonna do it, it'd be nice to see if there's some shade options.
Looking at that, um, where the parks, you see those canvas kind of.
Right, I was thinking just the holes with the nylon and the canvas.
Doesn't have to be a solid hard structure. And they look really nice.
Oh, we're gonna get designers.
Yeah.
Possibly the furniture, if you got some of this, well, outdoor furniture for ease and, you know, it's in shade out there. And obviously with the.
Roses.
Things like that, we'd have to put those away.
Always tends to happen, the, the people will come with their umbrellas and then they block the people behind them and then it's an issue. And then, so tennis families are generally used to bringing the chairs, but if we're doing this and we're off, you know, we want the team to sit together, we want shade, I think would be, be nice. I love the cubby idea, cause everybody's stuff is hanging out in the dirt or the concrete or grass.
So, uh, for now, uh, resin materials, so, ready for outside, rainy, snow.
In the last?
Yep. What color? To be determined, two colors, two coats, two, two.
Green and blue.
Red and white?
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of flexibility out there.
Green and blue. There are the, yeah, it's a US, US open colors. There are some districts that have, we've done custom colors, we did, done our school colors, we've done a maroon and a light blue.
Is that in, is that in the budget here or no?
Custom colors aren't, but the standard colors are.
A lot of places that do the painting of these are, are not used, so the, um, general contractors, Saint George, they're unionists, so they can't work with them. And they, there's no one, there's not a lot of people that do it, I think, for sale, we've done, we've used them before for our courts. There's a few other companies that come in, so when it's ready, then we'll make the contract directly with them and get it for them.
We're meeting with the, uh, Monster next Tuesday. There's some landscaping requirements that they wanted, so we had a bunch of landscaping products.
Landscaping requirements?
Tree, trees.
Oh, yeah. Trees and plantings. They wanted, they want us all, all this whole piece.
Trees are good.
We don't wanna put anything on it easy.
They are at the dig.
We have a lot, and they actually have, the park will have some work on the trees and actually we put them all there. For across the street.
How does it work out with the post-tension concrete and the union concerns?
Win, victory.
All you know. It does settle right by you.
Okay, so there is a company, they're actually at St. Louis, I have it already, that, um, they've done several new projects and they're a union company and, uh, one of our local general contractors, actually two of them, Andrew and Assie found them. So they were looking all over for, finding some lines and they, they found someone that. And they were, they were pretty stringent, but they've got very stringent requirements that, you know, had to have done this. And I called their, I called the different, um, schools that were doing it and I talked to four of them. And said they're, they're a great, great company to work with. And actually the Musco rep, Brent Castle, has done thirty projects with them, not all post-tension concrete, but lighting projects. And says they're.
First, sports field.
They specialize in baseball fields and playing sports and so. And then when we redid the baseball field, we had those lights, that light pole that came down, we took all the lights off of that and we're gonna repurpose them for, for this. So we'll have, that's, and talking with, with the DLA, Harvard brand, it's like you want a couple of these courses to be your showcase courts, if you have some really high, you know, the number one singles if you're now hosted a semi-state or something like that. The lighting is really, um, high quality, so we'll have, we'll have that with the lighting.
And what's the degree, the angle compared to what we have now, are they on the same north south?
They are, and this is the way we talked about, cause the actual way you'd want them is up this, I think it's fifteen degrees.
But that would preclude the viewing, that would preclude the viewing, uh, structure, it wouldn't fit at that angle. And then we're over these and, that is one thing we wanted to do, try to keep working it in there every which way. This whole pipeline right here, where the gas, it's like aviation fuel.
I think it's jet fuel. It's jet fuel line.
So it's fifteen degrees off of what we currently have now and what's currently.
Will be, will be true north now.
We're gonna be north south as opposed to east west, other off on a jagged degree right now, so these are gonna run in different directions.
Not half, they're just a little bit off. They're not going east west.
Correct.
No. They're going, they're going true north something.
We're gonna be more true north something.
The research I did, I was supposed to be this way.
Correct, correct.
So where are you with fifteen degrees angle right now?
Uh, yeah, I think that's the secondary angle.
It makes sense because if the sun starts to go, you don't want the sun in your face and where we are, world.
North south?
No, north, north south.
I just, I don't know what the degree of inclination is supposed to be, but I know that it's not east west.
Oh, it's not, no, it's not.
Right. But now that I, I mean, I think you're saying that maybe this was set up wrong and, I don't, I don't know.
I think this was set up probably just to.
To fit in, to fit in.
It was actually perpendicular.
Probably out of the field. That's what they did.
Yeah.
We're at least that much more intentional about it, isn't it?
And do, and it's like on the access ninety degrees?
It's pretty close, it's not quite.
On their own. It's gonna be within a degree.
Are we, and we, we're not taking the nets and all the poles, we're getting primary poles and nets and stuff too?
All equipment.
And the, and the scorecard's gonna be still removable or?
Scorecards.
Or the matches, like they put them in the little, they take them in and out?
Those are.
Right.
Though, though, that's by the athletic department, that's not, that's not a part of this project.
If we needed advice on those, we could buy.
Yeah, your question was.
Well, they just have, yeah, I think they have different kinds. I don't know if you want permanent, again, I'm just asking these questions, cause these are all things that have come up in the past. Is it something?
Um, points are permanent, ours are portable. I would prefer portable just for the weather and the maintenance of them, so.
Cause there might be flimsy material.
Correct, they, they'll be damaged, they'll be damaged if they're out there all the time. So again, these courts with our deal with the town are open, and Crown Points are not. So we are, we, we are, we are working in a little bit of a constraint here that we allow the public to use our courts here in town. Some school districts have the luxury of keeping everybody out, so, um, you know, some of those soft cost things, we'll either look at the end of the project or those would be things that athletics would traditionally kinda take.
I'd be curious to have the coaches' opinions on, because the wind from that, those first, those five courts now that are going across, so those cards flip constantly and then they don't have the true score. So if they, some of them have those, um, containers, like the little balls in them and they're wind protected.
We can, yeah, we can.
I don't know if those are the right kind or not, but that's something I would ask the athletic department, because that was always a problem for getting new ones. And let's get them improved.
We'll talk to the coaches and see what their preference is, but, but something portable is gonna have a life, longer lifespan as opposed to something out there, all, all summer and winter.
Is there a shed there too?
Not a permanent shed, it's temporary. We asked for concrete pads for the projects and we'll look at a shed option right outside the entrance.
And so at least as big as what we have now?
I mean, similar footprint.
Is the town, okay, like, do they have any, any quote or say on this? I mean.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, like, if, if we decide, hey, this is exactly what we want, we like it, we still have to go and get it from them and.
We've been to a few meetings already and.
The height of the fence.
That's a main, yeah. The height right now are current ones.
The code says max six. They have to kind of make new codes for sports facilities.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess that's my question, I know, I know they're, yeah.
I'm rolling my eyes when you have to go back over there again. We, um, this isn't, this is the town and school town.
We're, we're.
We're doing everything we can for them and they can't do this.
Well, I guess, I guess that's where I'm coming from.
Steak eye.
I got a coffee cup over there.
I, I'll, I'll say this, when we've gone through these things, their biggest complaints are the land, like, the, the, people in town are complaining about landscaping and landscape finishes and making sure that we meet that code. And they're, these town boards are on these other groups for not having their landscaping updated. So they're gonna make sure these projects meet their landscaping requirements and, yeah, it's varying costs for us, but we've gotta work together on it.
But I mean, and, and their kind of, their input is, hey, we're giving you a great lease deal. You know, we, we're, they're, I mean, they're not, they're not supplying a lot other than, I mean, obviously the land and, and that deal. But they're not gonna be giving money or materials or anything.
Right, but they've got people they've gotta make happy too.
Yeah, of course.
Parking, what other groups parking? There's a volleyball match. I rode outside, so.
Draw aside the park. The current, the current park, parking, should be sufficient as long as there's not.
Outside. It's gonna do it, current courts.
It's actually probably better than this, because we'll use park.
The west side of them.
Yeah, remember you have that west parking over here, closer to.
Yes, and if you needed to, and if you needed to, you could still use the stuff to the south, which is like the regular pool parking and walk around, so they'll have.
But that's where a lot of people parked for cross country anyway, because it's easy in and out.
It's, and it's a really nice enough.
So we're having, and I wanna, I wanna pull out my new guy card on this, I am so sorry, I thought you guys had already had a meeting like this before I arrived, I thought this, this provided, it's a metaphorical result, I thought all this was a story and grand, and I apologize that we brought it into you and you hadn't done this, that was not intentional, we weren't trying to, slide one through, I honestly and truly thought this had already happened, you can expect this type of meeting with the LA, with Sean, for everything else that we do, and I, I just incorrectly assumed we'd already crossed this bridge, so I apologize that we're asking you to look at this in the same week that we're trying to get you to approve of it, that won't happen again. It's my fault that it happened now, cause I just made an assumption, so I apologize, guys. Let me, honestly, I have to defer to other expertise in the room, I, I know zip about tennis, tennis courts, I've never played, I've never been there, I don't know, like, what's, like, we defer to you because you've been the most involved, but, you know, likes, dislikes, you've had community input, you've heard parents like gripe about stuff, it's just that, you know, and,
Right.
and I know seeing this, you're kind of like, oh, man, I wish we had this, I wish we had that, it's kind of late in the game, so I'm just kind of deferring to your opinions and thoughts on this and, and stuff we could do, some we can do, some we can't, and, and you guys are trying to find quick ways to say, oh, we can maybe look at this in the future or whatever. So I, I don't really.
Everything we've talked about as an add-on that's not included, it has an aftermarket opportunity once we get through the traffic recirculation multi-purpose building. Because of the, the fact that we will raise this building and use this water detention site as a retention pond, as long as the town will let us, then that buys us savings down property where we're gonna do all the other construction, because we won't have to put an Olympic-sized pool underneath that building or those parking lots, because we'll be up there of all the water detention. Is that an accurate way to, to describe that?
We met with the several engineers and they're, they did put the numbers in and one, two million would save by not putting like.
This isn't our contingency budget, this is savings, this is real savings, on top of the already one to one point five, we're gonna save by not adding on this building and co-locating it with a multi-purpose building. All that to say, the goal is that we'll squeeze some money for the end, we just don't know how much, we need to have a priority conversation, wherein we say shades first, bathrooms second, or vice versa. I don't really have a dog in this fight, I was varsity tennis coach, this is a lovely facility, we probably need to find some shade and eventually some bathrooms. But I don't know that that should stop us from doing this, that's the thing I wanna say out loud, is I don't know that if we go back, ask them to rework the plans, go out for another bid, we're not pushing this whole, thing down, up a year down the line, when we can do this and everything we've talked about that is a concern, we can come back and do.
That was my question, is what were the top priorities for our tennis coaches?
Great question.
We've met with them multiple times on this, their biggest, their biggest requests were, uh, ten courts, lights, um, they wanted an elevated beauty deck, places for kids to put stuff, um, and storage, that was it.
Have they seen this example yet?
Yep.
The other coaches saw it.
Pat, Pat has seen him multiple times, so.
Did I say that out loud?
This was something with bleachers to reuse those to save some money, I mean, down the road, we could purchase some, have some shade on it all. It takes that, sort of later depending on where money comes in.
We can use the park district bathrooms, which I think obviously we have to have bathrooms, I think shade is the next concern, but, yeah, but thank you for all the.
It's just a tiny piece of ground, I mean, we look at it and we go, wow, it's big, but as soon as we started drawing twelve courts and looking at water and, it's like, how, how are we gonna get this to fit, and this, this was literally the best that we could get to fit, so. Oh, we had a ton of them then.
And we have no control over what happens over there, so if someday that starts to become available.
Yeah, we could.
And they appear to be adjacent, guys, they're a teacher, but they appear to be adjacent.
Yeah, we did, we did have discussions about additions to this facility pending whatever happens down the line. Um, the other concern from the high school standpoint, we're gonna have to give up the sectional another time, because our, our facility is not currently, we're not able to host a sectional this spring again. So we're gonna reach out to Highland and ask them to host one more time, but the sectional's in our court right now, we wanna get these done for next fall, so we can get the sectional back on campus. If not, the, the opportunity, we're gonna miss the window and it's gonna be gone for two more years, so we wanna make sure that we actually have a window of opportunity to have, to host a year and look at with our current. And most importantly, when Dr. Creek was talking about, before we're about, in order to proceed with the work for the multi-sport edition, those tennis courts need to go away.
The official survey we have to do, Lori, what's that you got?
Sean, no, his term was twenty seventy-four, right?
Fifty years.
It was forever, so.
The courts, hopefully the courts will last that long.
Life span of course fifty years.
Uh, so for sure, the bathroom, just the existing bathroom out there and for sure the high school for when we have the best.
Sure.
Right?
We're gonna have to talk right now, that's what the town, our current course.
We put that in for the town, yeah, and we'll have, we'll probably have to do something similar in the future.
But we can put it over by their mansion.
We got a little bit more room, we have a little bit more room to put it. Uh, we did talk about, uh, some lighting options that would allow like a timing basis, so we're not running the lights all the time, so that people could come in and actually turn on the lights and it would turn on these bar cords for them to use, as opposed to having this whole facility lit up, um, constantly, so.
We have a lot more flexibility with the controls.
So we've got some control design stuff in there that we, we, we did come up with, that should help with that.
We can turn them on and off with our phone, we can help.
Morgan, you know, it's time for the episode, we've given up three sections, does it state it's still in our court that, that we can host next year? Uh, yeah, yeah, it's a two-year rotation, so, um, we're on, we're on the docket for next year as well, but then it'll come back up with any sectional receipt for both, yeah.
Is there any, could we have those that we do too?
Correct.
I don't know if they'd ever give it to us because of.
Hmm, probably not.
Depends upon who makes it, probably.
Most likely, it's a, it's hard to host a semi-stadium year just because of our, our location, they're gonna look for a more central location. And that's just a reality that we, we can't change, but for a regional site, this would work, um, and there, there is a reshuffle for the regional sites coming up anyway, so this, this should help.
Handover can't host it because when they did their project, they put it nine. USDA's ability to use this in the center to our department is gonna be a showcase for us as well. You know, kids spend all summer trying to work their ranks out, they get their college scholarships, doesn't that, magic mostly happen, so.
They don't really use these courts for USDA though, I know, maybe they will, cause match ball isn't. It's still around. There's not a lot of USDA locals, you know, but if they started like a total mansards, that's, 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 yeah, I'm fine, I just, obviously I had a ton of questions, haven't seen it, didn't know it was gonna be on the docket, I was a little busy last week, thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I feel.
I'm brutal, I'm honest.
Well, I feel, I feel really awful, guys, it, it, I promise you it won't happen again this way, you'll see all these plans before we ever ring the bid unit. That's why we need to locate a date to have.
Yeah, that's that seventeen.
Seventeen, hey guys, this is seventeen for.
No.
No, okay.
Me, we were gonna send you the, these dates after, I, cause I gotta circle these guys.
Okay, we'll send, we'll send some of the dates to you guys. You said get a date?
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it is. Are you looking for approval?
I'm like Kyle.
On the contract or what are you looking for?
No, no, I need, I need to know that you wanna set a meeting, a special board meeting, to approve this bid.
Can't you approve it at the December meeting?
It'll be, it'll be out there. It'll, it'll be expired by then.
So Amy, Kyle and I are going to be at the meeting, um, this Friday, Friday morning.
Okay.
Eight forty-five.
If I reached out to the contractor.
Well, maybe it's three, right?
If I reached out to the contractor and they were good with holding the bid, would you guys be all right just doing it?
They can just do it Friday, Sean.
Sean, they should.
It's not our interest to do it.
Uh, they gotta order it.
We're gonna do it Friday, Friday.
Yeah, they got stuff they have to start ordering.
I know, but we're literally going to all be together, we're gonna do it.
We'll post it tomorrow, we'll post it tomorrow morning, so there's.
Yeah, you have one forty-eight hours.
Do you guys wanna do eight forty-five or you wanna do right after?
We're doing it during the day?
Devil do it, devil do it right away.
I would do it right, I could do either.
We do it, uh, exactly.
Okay, I would do it before anyway, because people linger and have questions and then we won't.
So you wanna do it at, okay, eight forty-five, it is literally one item deal.
So actually.
You guys are okay with that?
Okay, we'll notice that meeting, I believe you need a motion to adjourn this work session.
No.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
There's a second.
Second.